At this time, shall we stand for invocation and the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I'll read, I'll just pray. Say, Lord, thank you for each and every one that's here today. Pray you watch over us, lead, guide and direct us in each and everything we say and do in our name. Lord Jesus, thank you. Yesterday was Mother's Day. Thank you for all the mothers in our county. Help us tonight to do all the good things to Hippy County and do the right things. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a call. We got six out of seven. At this time, we need a motion to approve of an agenda for the night.
So move.
Motion and second that have agenda be approved for the night. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Second.
Six, yes. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of the, uh, minutes.
I move minutes to be approved.
I'll second.
If the motion is second that the minutes be approved, are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Six, yes. Uh, next on the agenda, after the approval of the claims.
I second it.
Motion and second that the claims be approved. All in favor? Next on the agenda is the announcements. Are there any announcements at this time? Pardon me? Here are no announcements. We're going down to our presentation and we are passing a resolution of a great man that served this county well. I served with him down through the years. One of the best friends I ever had was Supervisor Talbot. He'd done a lot for this county. He'd done a lot for the community. He had been well missed and we thank his family for coming tonight. And at this time, the supervisor of district, Mike Palmer, could present a resolution to the family. Ask the Talbot family, would you come forward, please? Come on, Ms. Talbot. Ms. Talbot, too. They will get a picture of all y'all together. Yeah.
Walk service of 25 years where he retired. Proud owner and auctioneer for Francisco. Alan Bill Talbot was a member of the Buckingham Masonic Lodge. Or a member of the Buckingham County Board of Directors. Other member of Toba Volunteer Society. Whereas Ernest Allen Bill Talbot was a member of Chesapeake. Honorated. Alan Bill Talbot never met a stranger and would have. Up getting out and talking with people. Always bragging about his son. Alan Bill Talbot was loved and respected by all who knew him. Therefore, did resolve that the Buckingham.
Thank you. We thank Alan and his wife for coming. They've come from a long ways. I haven't seen you since I done your eulogy for your father, but we thank God for you. And I, I named Bill, wife. I used to go see her all the time. I named her my soul sister. Yeah, when I see her, I say, how you doing, my soul sister?
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all.
At this time, we'll go down to public comments. Do we have anything about it?
We have three signed up.
All right.
First is Maggie Snotty, District Five. And Linda Morales will be next.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Maggie Snotty. I live at 194 Mountain View Road. I'm in District Five. And I just want to give you a quick update on the BATF Spring Road Cleanup. I will have charts and glossies and graphs and actual numbers and data for you next month. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of items. Um, our spring road cleanup for 2024 is turning out to be our best year ever. Last spring, we had 96 participants. And this year, we have 196. 148 adults and 48 kids. Um, I would like to mention, uh, one other thing. Uh, and you know, three minutes is just not enough time to talk about trash, but I'm not complaining. Um, the increased participation this spring has been driven largely by the participation of several hunt clubs. And that is a direct result of Cam Gillum, who reached out to about 15 hunt clubs and made a personal appeal to ask them to please participate, and they are. Uh, and so in that spirit of personal outreach, uh, I know how busy each of you are. Uh, but I would like to make a small request. Um, as you're out and about talking with your constituents in your church groups, your civic groups, whatever, if you could just try and encourage people to participate in the Adopt a Highway program. And you can refer them to me. I am happy to give them all the detail. I will put them in touch with the lady in Farmville. And let me just say one thing. Once the road is cleaned, it is so easy to keep it clean. One person can clean one mile of road. And I know because I do Adopt a Highway with two friends and we clean four miles of road. Um, and so, uh, like I said, you can refer the people to me. And, uh, like I mentioned last month, I'll talk trash with anybody at any time. Thank you. I'll be back next month and I'll give you a more detailed update on everything we've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty, for all you do.
Linda Morales, District Two. And Catherine Tanakas will be next.
I have copies of what I'm going to do with, for each of you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
How are you, body?
Brian, how are you, ma'am?
Good.
Pardon me? Thank you.
Thank you, priest. Whoops, excuse me. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Uh, my name is Linda Morales. I'm from District Two. I'm Cameron Gillum's little backyard. So, um, I'm here today to request some funds for my nonprofit that I have. Seven years ago, I bought five acres in Buckingham County for the sole and only reason to develop a veterans training center. Um, it, this is because I had gone to a class in Denver, Colorado. It was the only place available to learn how to do hydroprymic farming. So, um, I knew when I stopped, walked into that greenhouse, that that's what I needed to do with my life. So I bought seven acres. I have a commercial sized greenhouse that I'm in the process of building right now. And I also have a tiny house that has been, uh, completely finished to be a classroom in order to start teaching veterans so they don't have to travel all the way to Colorado. There's 160,000 veterans in Virginia alone that I'm pretty confident that I could get to come and train. And I'm also confident that I could get just women veterans to come and train as well. So is what I'm asking for from Buckingham County is to help me out a little bit. I realize that I'm the new girl in town and that, um, I haven't been here forever. But I love this county. I have brought honey. I have brought strawberries. I have brought other products to this board to show you the, the wonderfulness that is this county. So, um, what I have given you today is a quick outline of our, of my business plan for the greenhouse and for the veterans. And, um, there's two pages from Laurelland Farms. What I need in order to complete my greenhouse, which is the plastic covering and that sort of a thing. So I'm asking you for money in the amount of just over $4,300, um, which would be spent in Buckingham County as well. And, um, I could be, I could be operational within 30 days of receiving these funds. And then I could be training veterans and then I could be donating. Uh, my goal is to donate all of the vegetation, which mostly be lettuce, basil, those sort of things. Um, and to train veterans, to help them with PTSD and to help lower the suicide rate in Virginia at least. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me, uh, we can't make a decision tonight.
Oh, I understand.
But we'll, we'll be getting back with you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Catherine Tanakas, District Five.
Is this correct? Am I speaking correctly?
Yes, ma'am. You speak. We hear you.
Catherine Tanakas, Glenmore District. Tonight is for the necessity that you supervisors with everyone in this administration responsible for the roads urgently provide us with driver safety guidelines. With growing demands on all drivers, we must be aware about the critical dangers of horse-driven buggies. The Amish are popular and our area is fast-growing with successful Amish family businesses. We have no awareness of how to protect on these highways. Stop, please, and think this out. On highways, speed limit 55 miles are live horses traveling at 10 miles. One recent accident in our area was due to a normally traveling huge industrial truck driving past the buggy in the neighboring lane. The giant diesel engine spooked the horse and caused catastrophic injuries to the Amish passengers. And this is what will always happen with live animals on roads engineered for high-powered engine vehicles. Recently, when I read in the Farmville Herald that horses are spooked by horns, I was shocked. Honking horns will always happen when driving. The immediate remedy is for you to partner with the Farm Bureau Building Road Safety Campaigns. Lit up large signs alerting drivers not to honk or approach buggies. The Chamber of Commerce should publish general booklets educating drivers about rural and safety town roads, road regulations specific for that particular area. Printed information should be at all businesses, at schools, churches and libraries. Partnering with the Farm Bureau will prevent future catastrophic accidents. Most are happening because we just do not know. Sorry. Yet all drivers are liable, whether driver, whether the drivers know about such unique road conditions or not. One accident can ruin many lives. Last week, I phoned the Office of Delegate Thomas Garrett, who lives here in Buckingham, requested that he engage in troubleshooting for his entire district. Thank you for taking immediate action now.
Thank you.
That is all.
Next, we move down to V dot, uh, V dot Road Writers.
Evening, board. Uh, we're going to tag tonight. I'm going to start off. Just want to thank Supervisor Gillum for the outreach you did with the litter. I think that's fantastic. Also, Snotty for her work there, too. We spend a lot of money picking up litter, but I think it's great when people get involved. I think it improves the culture of the area overall and people see people helping. So I'm plugged in and we're up here. Put together a quick PowerPoint late last week. Oh. Thought I had it. Anything? I don't think that's me doing that. Come here and plug in. Okay. Thank you. It's always nice to have a competent IT person. There we go. Alrighty. So every year I present on crashes to each county that I serve. And it's a little bit of a repeat, but for anybody that doesn't know me, I'm Scott Frederick with V Dot. See, my computer's not keeping up, so you'll catch me just looking up at the monitor a lot to make sure I'm saying things correctly. But this is the crash data from 2022. I get it from the Department of Motor Vehicles website. Um, and this, yeah, the data for 2023 hasn't been published yet, so I was, wanted to bring up these numbers to show how many crashes take place in, in, in the county. As you can see, in 2022, there was 180 crashes, three of them. Uh, there was three fatalities related to them, 114 injuries. Uh, and then some more numbers. There was 10,586 licensed drivers. And, uh, it gives a death rate per 1,000 drivers of 0.28. So I've, I've shared that before, that data before with Buckingham and I'll share the 2023 data when they're, when that's posted. But the, uh, other thing that I share each year with Buckingham County is the contributing factor related, contributing factors related to those crashes. With alcohol being a contributing factor, there was 11, no fatalities, six injuries. Uh, speed is always a big contributing factor. Forty-six crashes had speed related to the, to the. And, uh, the other thing that really surprises me is the 28, uh, crashes where there was unrestrained passengers. It's just people, you know, the easy way to say it's not wearing your seatbelt. So one of, one of those crashes with the no seatbelt was fatal. And the, the speed related, there was two fatalities where speed was a contributing factor. So I said the easiest thing to do to save lives is to, no drinking and driving, wear your seatbelt, don't speed. Uh, and if you, if you factor in other stuff like using your cell phones or the other distractions that we have, uh, that they play a big part. So we have a campaign going on right now at V Dot. It's basically emphasizing that the decisions that you make that take seconds or minutes at the most to make them, they can have a lifelong effect. So, uh, just said that to get started here. This is what the data from the, this is a live screen, screenshot of the DMV's website. There's a tool on there that maps all the crashes like a GIS map. It has a code for what type they were, fatal, injuries or just property damage. And, uh, as you zoom in, those, those highlighted areas that are just numbers, they go away as the crashes are spread out. And, um, I just wanted to show that we are, we, it's through the, uh, the Treads program is for online crash reporting. Um, but, so I wanted to speak specifically about Route 60 at the intersection of Route 632. Um, it, it has been brought up for the last couple of years and I appreciate the fact that you guys are engaged, that the fire company, fire department as well has contacted me about it. And because of that, it's been studied closely. Um, this is the history to date of, from the time we first started talking about it till basically now. Uh, but February 6th, 2022, we, it was brought to our attention and we submitted a work order, had traffic engineering study it. Um, the, the 2-6 is the date of a supervisor meeting. That's where I first learned about it. And then 2-8, I submitted the request. Uh, we got that study finished and the recommendations all installed by November of that year. Uh, requested an additional review in April 18th. And I had specifically asked for it to be reviewed considering installing transverse rumble strips leading up to the intersection. Additional review was completed June 1st and there was additional signage recommendations made and that they were installed by the 13th of June, 2023. And then in that study, they agreed, traffic engineering agreed to do a six-month follow-up. Um, and they said if there was any sign of non-compliance with the stop sign, just basically people running through the stop sign, that they would, um, that they would install the transverse rumble strips. So just some more data from the report. Um, this was the crash data from the very first study. As you can see, 2022 is there. But that was only partway through the year. As you can see, as I keep going, that number does grow. This is the recommendations that came out of the first study. They went from a 30-inch stop signs to 36-inch stop signs. They corrected the, it had stop ahead signs, but they were substandard. They fixed those. They fixed the route markers. And those green areas is where we cleared vegetation that could have been blocking signage. Um, we installed double line, double yellow lines on the side streets with stop bars. And then this is follow-up data from the second time it was studied. And as you can see, the crashes, uh, went up in 2022. There was more, but that's right around the time that we finished making all those installations. And that's why traffic engineering wanted to give it some time to see if it worked. And then the second time it was reviewed, the time where I requested the transverse rumble strips, they added this stop sign if you're traveling northbound approaching the intersection on the Kyra side. Uh, they put a stop sign on the left side of the road because you do come around a curve as you approach. They said that you'll see that sign before you actually see the sign that's on the right side of the road. So they, they thought that was going to have a big impact, uh, on reducing crashes. And this is the last time crash data was pulled prior to, you know, their last study. There was more crashes in 2023. Um, but they specifically pulled out anything that was, uh, this is the crash history where it's just non-compliance with the stop sign. As you can see, when you review it that way, it kind of looks like that problem went away. But, uh, so I did pull, those are the two crashes that were these two from 2023 right here. That's those two crashes. And then I drilled down on the data and you can see that one of them, the driver admitted to being distracted and the other one is a teen driver. So I think traffic engineering wasn't fully sure that it was, you know, enough to implement the rumble strips at that point. This was just circling back. I wanted to put this slide in here. Uh, this is the 2022 data that I mentioned. I just wanted to show how it maps that, too. You can pull it year by year, see what's going on. So it seemed like tra, crashes did seem to go down is the point I was trying to make here when we started adding signs. But, uh, they did agree to review it and this has all happened since last week. Um, I've been to the site. Traffic engineering's been to the site. We've had many conversations. And what we're, our plan is to do now is working to obtain easements on the right shoulders on both approaches. We're going to clear vegetation, open that shoulder way up so you can see the signs. And we won't ever have to worry about tree branches growing out in front of them again. We're going to oversize the stop signs to, the largest ones we make is 48 by 48. So they'll be very big stop signs for all three of the signs that are there. And then also oversize the stop ahead signs. We're going to move the stop signs closer to the shoulders of the road, even though we normally don't like to do that because they get knocked down more often. But we're going to bring them in real close to the shoulder of the road and then we are going to add transverse rumble strips. So, um, that's about what I would call throwing the kitchen sink at it now. But, so I just wanted to share that and then I'm going to open up the questions or comments real quick and then I'll turn it over to Bill for the normal update.
Supervisor Chambers?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Frederick, uh, thank you for your presentation. I'm glad to see you taking some, um, approach in trying to get this fixed. Since I've been on the board of supervisors, I've been on the board of supervisors for a little over two years. This is probably the most serious thing that I've talked about since I've been on the board. I think, Mr. Carter, you correct me if I'm wrong, tonight makes the fourth or the fifth time that I've addressed this with V Dot. And I want to let you know, first of all, we have the best V Dot employees in Buckingham County that anybody could absolutely have. Two of them probably Paul Burris at my funeral if anything ever happens to me. But you have the best bunch of guys working for you. My problem is not with them. It's with you and your office. Mr. Frederick, I've asked you four or five times and nobody is, is hollering or screaming tonight. I asked you four or five times to address this. I asked you one time in private before I brought this up in public and I told you somebody was going to get killed or somebody was going to get sued. You told me I hit your hotspot and you walked away. I'm not sure what the hotspot was with the suing of somebody getting killed. But that was the first time. I brought this up, Mr. Carter, is this the third or the fourth or the fifth time that I brought this up with V Dot? I have brought it up numerous times, correct? We can bring the dates up. All I'm asking you is I represent the people of District Two in Buckingham County. I understand that you work for V Dot and I understand you represent V Dot. Let, this past week, I think the EMS coordinator called you at home and told you about a turbo accident where a girl was flown in a helicopter one night this week. Is that correct?
Correct.
That could have been prevented, Mr. Frederick. That young lady was coming from Longwood College and just to let the public know, what happens when you come from Longwood and then going back to Northern Virginia? GPS sends them that way because it's closer cutting through the back road than it is going to 15. That young lady ran right across that stop sign and got. That young lady ran right across that stop sign and got T-boned. I've addressed this with Mr. Frederick and VDOT three or four times. My mother and a lady friend from Yorktown, my mother's lived here all her life, a lady friend of Yorktown, won't call her name, but is very close to some people in VDOT. They were coming from Faville about six weeks ago. My mother was riding, the lady was coming from Yorktown. My mom probably was talking, wasn't paying attention. Guess what happened, Mr. Frederick? They shot right across the road, ran up on it before they realized it. Your things about the rumble strips tonight, if you carry through of what you said that you're gonna do, I pray that this helps somebody and saves a life, just like I did when I talked to you the first time about a year ago. I don't know what more I can do as a supervisor. I'd be glad to give you the names of the people who called me in my district and talked to me about this. I've told them that it was no more than I could do than to beg you and VDOT to try to fix it. And again, this is no bearing on anybody that works in Buckingham County. They have followed orders from you. So with enough being said with that, all I'm asking you is please don't let another life of someone hurt because it could have been your daughter, Mr. Frederick, or my daughter. That could have been coming from Longwood this past week. And that could have been solved before that happened. But again, I thank you for the presentation that you gave and the rumble strips. I've talked to, I thought that Blue Rock actually owned the corners of that road. And I talked to Mr. Dixon. He told me as long as you wanted to clear, you could clear anything you wanted, as long as you put the rumble strips there, what we've been asking for. But unfortunately, he doesn't own the land. It's someone else's name and I'm gonna try to get a contact.
I've already been in touch with them. The Blue Rock Resources owns the Northwest quadrant. You've already given me permission.
Yes, and God told me that anything you needed, he just instructed to be tell you, any dollars you got from the trees, please put the rumble strips down. So again, this is no bearing on anybody in Buckingham. I have nothing personally against anybody with VDOT. But I am elected to represent the citizens of District Two and the people of Buckingham's safety. And I gotta do what I gotta do. And this has gone far overboard. But thank you for your time. Thank you.
还有什么 comments?
Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
I just wanna say that Firehouse Row would have done a good job of repairing that, done a fine job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, kind of this is my part of updating you on the, on our ordinary maintenance and our weekly stuff. We've started mowing our secondaries with our contractors here this past weekend. Actually, they start it Saturday. They gonna start in the western part of Buckingham County, work their way through, end up moving over into Cumberland County, kinda making a circle of motion for the contractor. They are picking the litter up on the gravel roads as they go or just a week ahead of them. So they're taking care of that. They're doing surface, our regular crews are doing surface repair now in front of our surface treatment schedule that's coming through. So you'll see them, we've actually slowed up a little bit, taking care of the potholes, trying to get those sealed up. So when a contractor comes through and seal the roads up, we'll have that taken care of. I was hoping that Mr. Davis is gonna be here tonight to see how that sign we put up down there for that D and N worked out for him.
I haven't talked to him about it.
I hadn't either, he hadn't, he hadn't texted me to see. Good, no news is good news, I'm hoping. So let's maybe keep him from going there and turning around, turning up his people's mailboxes. One other thing, and I think we're gonna have the six-year plan after this. But Banton Shop Road called, we're, it should have been three point two miles, only be point seven to finish it out. That's the only little snafu we got, but we can change that afterwards. That's all I got.
You're telling me bring that to twenty, right? You're telling me bring the dead product to twenty?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, it's only, in here, Brian was putting in and he accidentally put three point two miles. It's actually only point seven five to finish it out.
Yes, sir.
So that's, we're gonna change that and everything else is good.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Can I ask one more question? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. King, I forgot to ask and maybe you and Mr. Frederick can discuss it. This may be something we can work on and fix. When I was actually talking to, to this process of getting it fixed, I introduced Mr. Frederick to the fire department because the statistics that you all presented tonight don't match the statistics from what the fire department. I understand from one of your VDOT workers, Tuesday night's accident doesn't even, didn't even show up as an accident, is that correct?
That is correct.
So these figures that you all have, no one's throwing you under the bus about it. But they can't be accurate because if it's not accurate from what he showed, if Tuesday night's figure wreck doesn't even show up, how can these figures be right from what you all got? So what I'm saying is, I don't know if they come from the state police or if they come.
Let me jump in, anything that has a police report, we do have all.
But, but.
And I already have the state police report for the one from last week.
The initial report, like when it comes out the accident?
Yes.
I never saw it.
You never saw it, that's what I'm saying. So somewhere there's a miscommunication somewhere and that, that may, I'm taking it up for y'all. That may not be y'all's fault. I don't know if it, if it's the state police working it or the county working it or whatnot. But I was told Tuesday night when we had this accident with this young lady being flown out, it didn't even show as an accident to y'all. You never got a text message showing that it was an accident. That needs to be fixed somehow. And I'm not saying who's at fault to that, I don't know. But when it doesn't even show in the system, how can these accident reports be correct when y'all don't even have a list of the wreck happening Tuesday night? So.
We get, we get accident reports after the fact.
After the fact.
We weren't requested in, for assistance that night, so we didn't know that night. But we, we would get a copy of the report.
Okay, because the last time when we talked, I introduced you to the fire department and they actually are the ones that respond to most of the wrecks because Dillon is the central fire department here at that location. And they were telling me, and I introduced them to Mr. Frederick that night, that the statistics, when I say statistics reports that Mr. Frederick had, did not match their accounts. It was almost triple, quadruple times five. So these figures look considerably low.
But just, just like you asked me to do that night, I met with the mountain hall for fifteen or twenty.
But what I was trying to show was these figures don't agree with what my fire department says. So and, and that, I don't say anybody did misled that.
I totally agree with you that if that's the case, that's a problem, if they're not getting reported.
Well, they definitely told you that night that they.
But we worked closely after the fact and they never provided any more reports.
Okay, all right. Well, that's all I'm saying is just like Tuesday nights didn't show up. That's what was concerning to me is if they're not showing up as accidents, then it doesn't show up as bad on the piece of paper now. What Mr. Frederick's saying is after a period of time, they pop up. But all I'm saying is it, it's more accidents than what was on this piece of paper, is what I'm saying.
I do know that the other, some other counties that are under our jurisdiction, they, when they get dispatched to fire department, they call our TOC center. Let them know that we have dispatched the fire department for an accident.
Okay.
And trooper on the way or deputies on the way or something like that.
Your, your action on this of what the things that you say you're gonna do, I think is very sufficient. And, and so it doesn't make any difference if it wasn't correct, if it wasn't. But putting the rumble strips in and doing that, I see no reason that that won't work anyway. But I, that was concerning is it didn't match up by the report.
They need some help on a person on the southeast corner. If we can help find us who owns that.
I absolutely do and I know who it is. He's not, he doesn't live around here. And I actually talked Heniman, this is who I met.
Heniman.
Yep, Heniman. Yes, and I actually have a friend that took, does the maintenance and everything on his yard. And I've reached out for a cell phone number and I will pass that on to your supervisor in the Dillon District to maybe let him ask and see if he can go from that.
We'd like to, we'd like to get something to get a permanent easement. That way we can put in a route file that we got rights to go on and clean that, you know.
If it hadn't been Blue Rock, you wouldn't have had any problem at all. I don't know this, Mr. Heniman, I think he's away from here. But we'll reach out and tell him what's going on and hopefully he'll be understanding and land on. Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett, I did look at that, you was telling me about that pipe last time?
Yes.
And Darrell Edwards went by and looked at it. He said, that pipe has been there for years. Actually, they cleaned it out and made a drain for us. So he said, right now, nobody's planning on putting a permanent entrance. They just cleaned it up and put stone on it. And he said he's gonna keep an eye on it.
Okay.
But we did, to take a look at it.
As a safety issue, I, I thank you for looking at that. Yeah, I looked at it like the next day and I'm like.
Yeah, he stopped there and looked at it. Well, I went by and I said, I think it's piping that he went by and stopped and looked. He said, they cleaned it out for us. So they did take care of it for us.
At least help that part.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
I think, let me come back in a minute, the supervisor's gonna ask you.
I just, I just wanna say, Mr. King, I had some complaints about the, the retired office y'all had on Andersonville Road about the grass being so tall and everything. And lo and behold, I rode up there this afternoon and y'all took care of it today. And I see you done moved the chemicals and I just wanna say, I thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Because a lot of people in the community were a little upset about how it done grown up and looked like a little rough.
We're trying to keep it right because I, I think you're working forward to that property will go up for sale.
That was another question I was gonna ask. Do you have any idea?
Yeah, Mr. Chambers, I, I don't know.
I mean, a timeframe of when?
I think, did I send you to the stuff, to where you can go on it and keep check with it, the one that goes up sale, that anybody could?
Do you have that, you have that information, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, well, see, that's a, that's an interesting part is in the rest of, you know, purchase, you know? I don't know how to go, but I talked to Mr. King and he gave me the, you know, the information they need. He said it's gonna be for sale, so I think it's sealed bid, right?
Yes, sir, I think it's how they do it, ain't it, sealed bids for the property?
That I don't know.
Right. But that, that gentleman can answer all the questions.
That, and I wanted to thank you for taking care of the issues on Brittany Road. I see y'all came on down and did Coleman Road.
Yes, sir.
And I had, I had had complaints on both of those and y'all took care of it in a time and a manner. And I just wanna say, thank you, I appreciate y'all taking care of it as quick as you did.
We got two good superintendents in the county right now and they're on top of the game.
Well, you pass it on to them that I appreciate it. And, and also on Plank Road, y'all fixed that shoulder issue where the, where the COVID pipe was clogged up.
Yes, sir.
And y'all did a nice job. And I just wanna let you know, I appreciate it. That was also done in a time and a manner. I had a lot of complaints on it and I just, I appreciate you doing everything you do as quick as you do and taking care of the issues. And also six thirty-six, all those shoulders we had talked about last week.
Yes, sir.
I rode through that and they all look great, but thank you so much.
I'll pass it on to the, to the guys.
Tell them they're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a board member?
Yeah, I've got something.
All right.
Mr. King, Slate River Mill Road.
Yes, sir.
May you with, where that, with that road?
I'm more so with the numbers.
Right.
Fourty-nine.
Six forty-nine.
Yes, sir.
Right there, Road Twenty Market.
Yes, sir.
And goes back and meets Banton Shop.
Yes, sir.
All right, when you come from Banton Shop Road towards Road Twenty, you come up a little hill and a curve. All right, once you come around those curve where those houses are, it's been, it's starting at five, six, seven, eight, Slate River Mill Road and going up to five, seven, three, six.
Five, seven, three, six?
Five, seven, three, six, yes. Like four houses there and a driveway to go in between. Anyway, on the side of the road that would be coming from Banton Shop to Road Twenty, there is really no shoulder on that road right there in front of the house. And Supervisor Gillum know what I'm talking about because it's right there where he grew up.
He grew up there.
He grew up at that house there, that, and then the road goes down.
It's a big open hay field on the other side of the road.
Yes, yes. And that side is fine, but it's the side, you know, coming towards Road Twenty.
Yes, sir.
It's no shoulder there and the residents there have reported to me that there have been several incidents where cars have ran out the road.
Okay.
And basically if they, if that tire runs off the pavement, you're in the ditch.
I cut it off my golf, uh, go-kart years ago.
Yeah, he probably did.
Yeah, burnt off.
Now we know, now you know who's gonna blame you for that.
That's a rascal done it all.
That's right, he did it all back then. But anyway, and the ditch is real tall, you know? So once you run over there, there's no getting it back in the, in there. And even one guy with a trailer had come through there with like a, you know, two axle trailer. And when it fell in there, he hit that culvert because the culvert there right at the, the bigger driveway.
Yes, sir.
And the culvert is busted up on the end. And it's, he tore up both axles on that trailer come off of it. And several vehicles have ended up in the lady's yard there. I believe it's in fifty-seven, twenty-eight, their yards, you can see the damage from that.
I wanna say that's one of them roads that Mr. Mitchell had done years ago with plant mix. I don't, I'm, I'm gonna date myself and him too, about thirty years ago.
Yeah.
They put plant mix down to, I wanna say past, I'm not sure how, the church down there. Before you top off the hill there.
Right, yeah.
Was the church on the right?
Baptist church.
Yes, sir. I was thinking he done that and they done it just right there where it laid, they put plant mix on the old motor grader pavement.
And, you know, the problem about it is no shoulder right there in that little area.
Yes, sir.
And we were, you know, just fishing for a solution, but y'all have to look at it. I was wondering, you know, at least might would help it if when somebody, when they approaching that curve from Banton Shop Road?
Yes, sir.
If on this side of the road there, before they come up that hill, if it was some way to maybe put a, you know, a sign about a curve and reduce speed to forty-five or something like that? Because I don't know if they're coming around that curve and having to overcorrect or something. But I mean, like I said, it's no shoulder there at all. I mean, it's the, the white line on the edge of the road and then the ditch. And if anybody runs in there, they're, you know, they're gonna be in trouble if running in there.
I don't think, and we've done it before, we may be able to go in and actually add dirt back to it and give us, you know, ditch may not need to be that deep.
Right.
We may do something like that.
I don't see three accidents there myself.
And as few instances, we have actually put number threes in the ditch to where if you run off, you at least got something to hold you up.
To hold you, but this is, the ditch is just as clean as it could be. The guy where actually his mother used to live in, off of the road down there where a long driveway goes.
Right.
But anyway, he, right there, but the, the citizens that live in those last two residents, you can see in their yard where their yards are tore up, where cars run out the road or something and, and come across that, kinda like jump that thing and end up in there. And you can see where there's, their yard is torn up.
Yes, sir.
From that. So, you know, maybe if it, if it's signed about a curve and forty-five miles, I mean, that, that's y'all's, you know, judgment on what could be done.
Forty-five there now?
Maybe forty-five all the way through there.
I travel there every day, but I don't, I'm not gonna say no forty-five.
Forty-five mile hours feet limit right there. I don't know if it's that or going down the hill across the bridge and stuff.
I don't know, I'm not sure. But, you know, that, and even if it, if it is, you know, it's no, but that curve, if it was a sign about it being a curve, I mean, you know, but.
Yes, sir.
And just, just my personal opinion and I know you can take this with a grain of salt.
But you're exactly right there because I, I traveled every hall in Amish kids. And I tell you something else too, man, on a frost in morning, that's a slick spot on that road. When you come in that curve, I've seen people.
Bushed up.
Yeah.
It looked like in some ways, some of these backroads, when they put the yellow lines down, almost make people think they can go faster. It's the yellow line in the center and then they put the white line on the edge. They're like, man, this is a regular highway here and there, you know, I can fly on this line. So, you know, I, you know, I'm just saying, you can take that with a grain of salt. But anyway, if you could get there and look at that and see and, you know, I don't know what y'all would have to do.
Okay.
I know it'd be terrible to have to move the ditches over or something because then you're talking about the culvert pipes that are already there would have to be moved or changed, you know, I don't know. But it, it is bad spot. I had never paid that much attention to it until the citizen called me and, and real concerned. Get a chance to look at that, that, that's the only one I know of. And I might have told you last month, but thank y'all for the potholes that you filled in on Troubleson Creek Road. That's, that's helped a whole lot. I had people call me about it and I told them, you know, I was gonna get to you. Next thing I know, they were filled in before I got a chance to get up with y'all. So thank you for doing that.
About Alan? Yes, sir, I do. Uh, I just had, you know, we had talked one time before about six fifty down there below Old Tower Hill Road, going down that road a little bit far. It was a place where if it rained, it had a big puddle of water right there in the road. And they, they paved around it to help take care of it. But what they did, they paved on both sides. And in the middle where the two yellow lines are, it's no pavement there. And now I've had complaints about bus drivers and truck drivers coming down the road and they touch the edge of that and it pulls them off to the next side of the road. So they need, need that fixed, so.
I'll look back at that, but I think we got some pavement coming back over that. But if not, we'll get them to go back and put a seal coat over that and kinda take that out of there. Um, but they were doing it, we are trying, we hired a operator that can run a paver. And we've been using him a lot to really keep from that motor grader paving and it, our loads can go a lot farther. We, and get a better job of it. So we're trying to fill these ruts and divots in. And actually, we've, we've loaned him to Cumberland this coming week because they got the much stuff to get done. But we, we did made a good hire with this gentleman and he's been doing us a good job. But we just gotta, like I said, we gotta go back and if that's not on the schedule, we'll get them to go back and seal it up.
Appreciate it, I know y'all doing good. Hey, the other question was, we talked, I know it's been a while, about the, heard on Route Twenty, the Slate River Bridge, ain't it?
I was gonna ask about that too because I come across that last week.
Got that dip and I know you all had talked to y'all's bridge department?
Yes, sir.
And they said somebody working on it, do you have any idea when that's gonna happen?
Working to have some asphalt placed there, and, uh, contractor right now hasn't put us in his schedule to come do it. But probably in June, we're gonna be using our own paver to do it if we can't get the contractor to come do it.
Okay, I just wanna check on it, I know it's still a lot of people having issues there.
I think people say it's always been a little bit of a bump there, but I, I believe it's settled, so.
Think it increased a little bit, yeah.
Worse.
Yeah, uh, the only other thing while you standing up, I've been coming over to six thirty-two, right by Scott's Bottom Road into sixty. And I did notice when I pulled up to the road, coming over to six thirty-two, trying to look up Route Sixty, I'd have to get real close to the road to see what's up the road. So, that means you got bushes and that bank over on the side, so it's up to me to dig anything up.
That side there is beside it, when they measured it, only had six hundred and thirty feet of sight distance, and that's, six hundred and ten's the minimum.
Yeah.
So, it's just barely over the minimum, but you, you're, you're doing the right thing by being careful and pulling up and looking.
Yeah, I try not to go over eighty mile an hour, just hard. I just kidding, anyway, I, I, I just wanna tell you about that, that's just something else for you to look at.
Bear with us, cuz we're gonna try our luck with fix, trying to fix that thing on twenty, best way we can, so.
Okay, I thank you, I just wanna let you know what I know, and, uh, I know y'all gonna work on it in time.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't always work out like you want it to, but.
We've already, I think, put a purchase order in for work that they're just not gonna honor, is what it sounds like.
Okay.
We're gonna have to revisit the contract.
We're going back to plan B, and we're gonna be doing it ourselves.
Yeah, well, I appreciate whatever you can get, get done or do, cuz I know a lot of people still having issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we got the public hearing, six-year plan?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You know, open the public hearing for the, uh, beat out the road, um, out of six-year plan, secondary six-year plan, twenty, twenty-five to twenty-thirty. By the sound of the speak. I have a note I left at home, yes, again, old forgetful, you know, right there at seven oh five where it crossed twenty at, uh, Bond Road?
Yes, sir.
That road number, I, what, do you, y'all know the road number, my sister? Right there where seven oh five cross, the Max's led out in there, dirt road, ain't that one about a half a mile? Ain't that road on the six-year plan? I forgot my notes at the end.
Um.
If you cross twenty, right, it's called Bond Road, crosses twenty, over from six fifty-nine, it's not on there?
Yes, sir.
I thought I put it on there years ago, yeah.
Well, it may be on the, I don't have, I've, I've only got what we're, what we agreed to on the, in the last little bit, I didn't bring your whole.
Okay.
Six-year.
I'm trying to think of the number of the road, much of that passed that road, I can't think of the number of that road for nothing, it's a dead-end road, a little dead-end.
Is anybody else who booked his house?
Yeah, uh, yeah, uh-huh, where the Max is led in it.
Marianne.
Yeah, yeah. Just a little short distance there, might not be a half a mile in it.
But do we have the other list? It's a bigger list than this.
Yes, sir, yeah, we've only got the ones that you added, um, this year, from a twenty-nine on to thirty. Yeah, it is the ones, you know, we, we're working on now, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, I don't know if Carl's got them, I, I did not have it, I apologize.
I'll look for while you do your public hearing, see if I can.
Okay.
I think he sent it to me on email.
Yes, he did, yep, he sure did, and I apologize.
It ain't too late to add a to this. I'm trying to think of the number of the road, I just can't, won't come to me, much, much is that on past that road?
I'm just wondering if it's on the other list that we have.
Yeah, Muddy Creek, it's right there, it's Bond Road, when you cross, come in, come down Bond Road, come straight cross, right, straight cross on it.
Muddy Creek is before his road.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Yeah.
A dead-end road. Max's, Max's led on that road.
I apologize not having that with me.
It says seven sixty is a dead-end road too. It's seven ninety-four.
Seven sixty is a Cold Comfort off of Tower Hill Road.
Oh, that's not it. Huh? It's seven oh five both ways.
Okay.
Mr. King, it says seven oh five both ways, it's just seven oh five run across twenty, I thought it.
Fast I read through the.
Yes, sir.
So, from the, what Bill and Brian put together, they're gonna add on to the end of what was already approved. Typically, what most, uh, most boards elect to do, but I can go ahead and read through what was on the twenty-four through twenty-nine approved six-year plan, and then. I'll read through this attachment that's gonna get added on to the.
I thought it were, I told you.
Okay.
One was I thought it was on there, people on there.
Though that it's officially part of the hearing record. The ones in the beginning are the ones that have already been completed, we always work our way through the list in order. Um, so start, and some of these ones will be completed and just need to be the paperwork closed out. Uh, but the first one on the list was seven oh two Ivy Road from the dead end to its intersection with Route six sixty-five. Next on the list was.
Get three balls.
Six sixty-eight Hunting Shack Road from the dead end to Route six fifty. Uh, next on the list is seven sixty-eight Hunter's Road from six forty to the dead end. Next on the list is. Looks like six seventy-nine Payne's Pond Road. Now, that one's already been completed, and we have Red Shop is already completed, I think Crescent Road, six eighty-nine is one of the ones we've done in the last couple of years. Uh, seven fifty-six Wise Ridge Road, that one's complete too, isn't it, Wise Ridge? Okay, so these are all old ones here, then six seventy-three Virginia Mill Road from the dead end to six seventy-six. Seven thirty-nine Blackwell Road, I believe we've gotten started, but haven't put the surface on yet. That's from the dead end to Route seven, six seventy-eight. Six, Route six ninety-three from Wildland Road, uh, from point three miles east of the dead end to Route six oh four. Six twenty Mill Road, I know we have the stone down on that, on that one, that's from the dead end to Route fifteen. Uh, six twenty-seven Warren Ferry Road, it says from a tenth of a mile north of Route six seventy-eight to six tenths of a mile north of six seventy-eight, it's a half-mile section. Route six, Route seven forty Firehouse Road from Route six sixty-five to the dead end.
That mile further down in.
Okay, there's gonna be a correction made to that one.
Mr. Fredrick, back, back up to Haddon Ferry Road, you said, I thought Haddon Ferry Road come out six ninety-five.
I think I said Warren Ferry.
Oh, you said Warren Ferry, I'm sorry, I thought you said Haddon Ferry.
Um. Yeah, Warren Ferry.
Okay.
Route seven forty Firehouse Road, Route six sixty-five to the dead end. Route seven sixty-six Old Fort Road from Route sixty to the dead end. Route seven fourteen Pembleton Road from Route fifteen to the dead end. Route seven seventy-eight Boulevard Road from Route six fifty to the dead end. Like Route eight twenty Avon Road from Route six forty to the dead end. I think this is the one you guys were talking about, seven oh five Max's Road from Route.
That's it.
Route twenty to the dead end. Then we have six oh eight Elkin Road from Route six thirty-five to Route six thirty-six. Route seven eighty Hilltop Road from Route six thirty-six to the dead end, does that sound right? There's a typo here too, it says Route six three, six eight, so I know it's not a four-digit route number, but we'll get that fixed too.
That's six thirty-six?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with Hilltop.
Hilltop Road, it says it's two tenths of a mile long, and it's a dead end, so it's just a little.
I, I know, but I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that route number fixed too before Carl signs the next, the plan after tonight's hearing. Um. Plantation Road, Route seven ninety. Uh, from Route six thirty-eight to the dead end. Route seven thirteen Happy Hollow Road from Route six ninety-five to the dead end. Route seven oh six Fitzpatrick Road from Route six oh two to the dead end. And Route seven seventeen Randolph Road from Route six thirteen to one point oh six miles north of Route six thirteen. Route six twenty-two Sharon Church Road from Route seven twenty-two to one point three three miles south of Route seven twenty-two. Route six fifty-three Logan Road from six oh two to six ninety-eight. Uh, Route eight oh one Hope Road from Route fifteen to the dead end. We got Route six sixty-four Sycamore Creek Road from Route seven thirty, Route seven thirty-seven to Route six oh four. Got Route eight oh four Shady Road from Route six sixty-nine to the dead end. Route six forty-nine Mulberry Grove Road from Route six oh two to eight tenths of a mile east of Route fifty-six. And then that's the last re- road on the list, so these roads here will be added on to the end, if that's the pleasure of the board. We have Route six seventeen Banton Sha- Banton Shop, which is gonna be corrected to be zero point seven five miles long, but coming off of Route twenty. To where the, the pa- the pavement, it's the gravel, the gravel section there. Um, we got Route si- seven sixty Cold Comfort Road from the dead end to Route six sixty-eight Old Tower Road. That's one mile in length. Got Route seven twenty-eight Nubbin Hill Road from six ten to the dead end, that's three quarters of a mile in length. Got Route one zero one six Wetstone Road from the dead end to Route one thousand and two Camden Street, that's six hundredths of a mile long. We got Route six fourteen Forbes Road from the Appomattox County line to Route six thirty-six Francisco Road, one point six miles long. Route seven ninety-four Eld Ridge Road from the dead end to Route six twenty-two Johnson Station, and that's zero point one five miles long. And then we have Route six fifty-one Muddy Creek from Route seven sixty-three to Route six twenty-two, that's one point five five miles long. And we got Route eight oh five Rock Road from the dead end to Route fifteen, and that's zero point two miles long. That's everything that you guys prepared. Um, I will turn it back over to Bill.
I guess, uh. Over the public hearing, have a motion accepted? Nobody signed, but speaking of public hearings, we close the public hearing, uh, we need a motion to adopt this.
Don't move.
Motion in second, and we adopt this, uh, plan from, uh, twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty. Okay, and the question and the motion, all in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ms., yeah, Emerson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this evening I have to introduce, an introduction of a case for each of you. Um, it is case twenty-four ZMA three forty, the applicant is Three Thousand West Clay LLC, John K. George of five zero zero five West Clay Street in Richmond. The tax map for the request is thirty-one parcel eight, it contains just, um, at two point two five acres, and it's located near three one seven eight six North James Madison Highway in New Canton. This is in the Marshall Magisterial District, it's currently zoned A-one. The request is the map amendment, uh, rezoning from A-one agricultural to B-one business for commercial use, and the applicant is asking the board supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this case. Once again, this property is located in North James Madison Highway in New Canton, Marshall Magisterial District, it's currently zoned agricultural, and the landowner is Charlottesville Realty Corporation. And the applicant is John K. George with Three Thousand West Clay LLC. This property operated as a commercial business many years ago and has no grandfather status due to the timeframe since last operation. Mr. George contacted me early this year regarding the possibility of commercial usage of this property. Special use permits were explained, but he did not fill an SUP what best suit his business plan, as he would potentially seek to have multiple SUPs due to the specific tenant that may occupy the building. Mr. George indicated that a zoning map amendment would best suit his needs, as any permitted use would be allowed without seeking special use permits. This request was presented to the board supervisors at the February twenty twenty-four meeting, seeking advisement as to the acceptance of this application. The board supervisors was agreeable, and Mr. George was notified to proceed with his application for this zoning map amendment. I have included background information for this particular area and its location, and also, uh, what is included as permitted uses and special uses within the District Four Business District. Now, this case was introduced to the Planning Commission on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and a public hearing was held April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Motion was made and rece- received a second to pass this case to the board supervisors with a recommendation of approval. The vote was taken, Commissioner Cruz was absent, Commissioner Backrack voting against this motion, Commissioners Bickford, Doria, Capashin, Skishumaker, Gooden, and Supervisor Davis voted in favor of the motion. Would it be the pleasure of the board supervisors to schedule a public hearing? If so, June tenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M.
Here, request, Ms. Emerson, we need a motion to schedule the public hearing for June.
Don't move.
There've been motion in second that we'll schedule a public hearing in June meeting, June.
Tenth, twenty twenty-four, six P M.
June the tenth, twenty twenty-four, six o'clock, bless you. All in favor of the motion? Next, Ms. Emerson.
That's all I have for you this evening.
I thought you had two, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm gonna clean my glasses in.
I'll have more for you next month.
All right, let's move into the end, Department of Agents reports and items for consideration. Now, Commissioner revenue, consider refund of R L P investment LLC due to the documentation to show the open space Eastman agreements with the Evergreen team. On eight partial in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars, forty-three cents, what is the board pledge? That's a, that's a refund in the court.
Yes, sir, so, looks like what has happened, they paid those taxes, and then they presented documentation saying that she was tax exempt, and now she's wanted to give them a refund.
All right. What is pledged to the board?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
Sorry.
There've been motion in second that we will consider this, um, all in favor? Six yes, all right. Number two, consider, Commissioner revenue, consider refund of Central Medical Group LLC due to IRS documentation letter. Recognize them as tax exempt on a section five oh one C three in the amount of two thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars, eighty-three cents. What is the board pledge on that?
Who we? One, since it's tax exempt.
All right, got a second? Motion in second, and we will, uh, refund this, and then the question and the motion, all in favor? Six yes, all right. Three, billing inspection, consider refund of J E S for billing permit one nine eight four nine two dash two four. Due to commission not moving forward with the project in the amount of thirty-one dollars, that's a whole lot of money.
I'll make your motion.
All right. I've been, there've been motion in second, and then the question and the motion, all in favor? Uh, on, on end, the appointments to the, uh, committee's board and agency, I talked to Supervisor Yelliam, one is in his district, district two, and one in my district, district six, and we're looking to postpone this to next month. That's, that's a good one, you ready?
Yes, sir, I reached out to Mr. Braxton by message tonight.
Okay.
And Mr. Chambers, if you see him, please.
Okay, all right, we will, thank you. Kenny, attorney matters.
Well, you get to, Mr. Chairman, we skipped, uh, the addendum.
I'm sorry, I got another one, I'm sorry, I got another hand that you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let me find it. U-FLEC request to install the, uh, covered batting cage at Gene Dixon Park, what is the board pledge on that?
Yes, sir, your, uh, staff. Yes, sir. Your, uh, station tonight, we got this letter late today. Um, the President, Mr. Red wants to. Get your permission to install a covered batting cage at the Gene Dixon Park. As you know, where the owners of their facility, so they need our permission before they install any kind of structures. Um, this will be no cost to the county. Uh, they have somebody volunteering their label or donating their labor costs. And then the U F L is gonna use some funds they receive from their World Series team to help pay for this cost. So. They're just asking for permission to put this structure on the.
They just want to have a blessing on it, right?
Yes, sir.
I got no problem.
I'll make your motion.
Okay.
There've been motion in second and we'll give them permission to move forward with this project. Uh, then a question and a motion. All in favor? And then we come into the canny matter, canny attorney matters.
My name's Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, canny administrator report.
No items as well as Mr. Chairman.
All right. Other board matters.
Uh, I like.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
Um. Ms. Snotty was talking about the trash pickup a while ago. And I just wanna say, I was busy Saturday, but when I came home Saturday afternoon. The hunting club down the road from me, which is Buckamout Hunt Club. They worked on Route six forty and they worked on Rock, which is Annisville Road, and they worked on Rock Mill Road. And I mean, it was clean as a whip. They did a great job. And I think that everybody in the community needs to know that it was, it was those guys and they even had the kids out there. Picking up trash and they, they sent me a picture. They had a whole trailer load of those orange bags loaded up. And, uh, Brian Staten, who is, I don't, I don't know if he's the president of the hunt club or not, but he had contacted me and asked me. What, what area of the roads that I think was the worst? And I told him that, you know, start at six forty and work his way down through Rock Mill. But I just wanna publicly say that those da- guys did a great job. I think it was a great idea by Ms. Snotty and, and, and Cameron of being on that committee to come up with that idea. And I think, um, they need to be commended for the great job that they did. I just wanted to throw that out there because they, they did work in my district.
So I just wanna let you know, I got the same picture that Mike did. It was about twelve or thirteen kids. And all the blade, they had blaze orange hats like it was hunting season, right? And all the hats were about three sizes too big and the only thing you could see, and they had a hunting dog sitting in the lap. So I just wanna let you know. That's called Buckingham Proud, if you ask me. And I think it was a great job.
I agree.
We lucky to be living on six fifty-nine, close to the cemetery. They keep arrows clean. The boys constantly pick the trash up on the roads. They do a good job up there. Now, this year, the fourth of July is coming on, uh, Thursday. So if this is pledged to the board, we'll give the candidate that fifth day off and let them work on Saturday Sunday. Now, we need a motion to give them that, uh, give them that fifth off, July the fifth.
Uh, so moved in.
I'll second it.
There've been motion in second and we will close the office on July the fifth. Uh, then a question and a motion. All in favor? Six yes, thank you, board. At this time, we need to go into executive session.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the two, um, where they got zoning appeal people, do we have to put them in?
No, we, we said we'll put it off the next month.
Okay, I didn't hear it. I just missed it.
I'm sorry. Is it my district and Cameron's district?
Yes, sir.
We both not ready to make an appointment tonight, so we, we just do it next month.
Okay, I just wanted to check on.
Thank you. All right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we go into executive closed session. State of Virginia Code two point two, dash three seven one one dash A dot seven. Consultation of legal counsel and briefing by staff members or counsel. Pertaining to actual or probably litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting. Would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probably litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened. Or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe. Will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting. Merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on the matter.
We got a second. If the motion is second, we're going to exec- execute session on the code that was read. All in favor? Do, this, yeah, Jennifer, they still in the room over there?
They're gone.
All right, we are going to the executive session. Wait a minute, hell no, we're going to regular session.
Return to regular session.
Return to regular session.
Return to regular session and certification that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only business matters related to the codes of which the executive meeting was convened was discussed or considered in the closed executive session. I make that motion.
Can I get a second? If it's motion and second, and then a question, all in favor? Six, yes, he had no action after his executive session, we adjourn, right?
Yes, sir.